Alright.
But it's not.
Not the greatest orientation, but we'll make it work. Alright. If I start with my displacement equation, I'm probably gonna have to use both of them and that's fine. Because the whole idea there is, that's another example where I'm using two different equations that have time by substituting time out of the equation to make time go away. And just using displacements and velocities otherwise.
Oh my gosh, you can factor it out.
Okay.
It's divided.
I'm so.
If you want to do independent ops, do so quietly. Others are trying to learn.
Say what you said.
Okay.
Figure it out.
It is. You don't have a photographic memory?
No.
You don't?
No.
How?
How?
I'm not. Why?
Why do you believe you don't have a photograph?
So she's playing.
My two displacement equations, correct?
I was being.
We're doing that problem, jumping, jumping the circles.
Okay.
Alright, those are my two displacement equations, correct?
Right.
Yep.
Okay. In terms of stuff I have or no? Final displacement? It's a number I have, right?
Right.
I'm starting displacement, starting displacement.
Starting displacement, uh, zero.
Zero, let's put my origin here. I'm gonna put my origin here and call that up. That, up, up positive and right positive? Up positive, right positive. I'm at origin. With the origin at the base of the jump, okay? What is my horizontal acceleration?
Zero.
Zero.
Whoa, 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 oh my goodness. Oh, my goodness.
Horizontal velocity. V naught cosine theta t?
We wrote right.
Oh my gosh, so I'm not completely, completely wrong.
Vertical.
I am.
What is y?
Oh, we're already. One.
Are, are, are we, are we good up here?
One point five.
Yes.
It's a number I know, right? Let's call that height of the ramp, just cuz I don't like numbers until I need them. So my final, this vertical displacement is what?
The final, why, it doesn't change.
It doesn't.
Wait, it does change.
What is my final vertical velocity?
Zero.
Zero. The way I've set up my origin. And my reference frame, that is zero.
So yeah, and then it's one point five.
That's my height of the end of my ramp, correct?
Yes.
That's v naught sine?
So that's sine, oh, you just said that. It's a problem.
What is, what is my acceleration?
Oh, G.
Negative G. I had defined positive as up, right?
Yes.
Yes. Because I start in the positive direction from my origin. But that is what we're trying to pay attention to, cuz a lot of you like to have your origin up here, which is absolutely nothing wrong with that. In that case, if I end up down here and that's my origin and I call positive up, then that would absolutely be a negative h. But then my G would be positive and all this would switch around, I'd be fine, and my velocity would be the other direction, it would work itself out. But pick it, pick a reference frame and stick with it. Okay? I've picked down here cuz that's just how I like to do things. I'm calling that positive, I'm calling that positive. So my ending vertical displacement is zero, my starting vertical displacement is a positive h. My starting vertical velocity is a v naught sine theta. My acceleration is
Negative G.
Negative G. Zero equals h plus v naught sine theta t minus one half g t squared. Now this bothers me some because I have a squared t here and I have no t here, so I can't factor it out. So that's annoying. But what am I trying to solve for? V naught.
Dang it, I did time.
Well, time is not a thing I have.
Wait, yeah, we can solve for time.
I could substitute if I wanted to.
We can solve for time on v y. Alright, no?
My y.
Sorry, I forgot my.
So, here's a thing I don't know, thing I know, thing I know.
But we also don't know t.
Right, same thing over here, thing I know, thing I don't know, thing I know, thing I don't know, thing I know, thing I don't know. So t and, t and v naught are the two things I don't know. So. Take your paper, solve that one, substitute over here, solve this and substitute over there. I like to solve this, substitute over there.
Oh, I am doing it right, okay, I'm doing it right. Yes, I am, okay.
I'm trying to find v naught.
I'm sorry, I confused myself.
I don't know t, so let's solve for t and substitute. Right?
Yes, I got that.
Time equals x divided by v naught cosine theta, is everybody by that? Substitute, zero equals height plus v naught sine theta x over v naught cosine theta, that's convenient. That works out real nice. Minus one half g x over v naught cosine theta squared.
Oh.
Yes.
Oh, you're doing it the other way.
Something worked out to your advantage, what, it didn't work out? You just said it sort of worked out.
Listed. Cuz my v naught's gonna cancel, which is gonna help me a lot cuz this is gonna be, I'm trying to isolate a v naught, and having v naughts running around all over the place make me nervous. But I got a v naught there and a v naught there, they're gonna cancel, it's just gonna go away. And that's gonna simplify to a tangent, that's gonna make my life easier. Do you see that the v naughts cancel? I'm gonna move this over to the other side of the equation and flop them. Sorry for the bad penmanship. Everybody see that? Now. I'm trying to write in such a way that this stays on the board. I'm gonna rewrite this up here. Okay. Does that look scary?
Yes.
Okay, this is the habit I want you guys to get into. If that looks scary, try imagine that with numbers. I could not track and find my problem if I get something that makes no sense. I can track this. Now, to make you feel better, is or is not this all numbers that I know?
All except for v.
You, you, you know all these?
Oh yeah, all those, yeah.
So, that's just numbers. I don't have to worry about isolating, factoring, that stuff's all fine, it's, they're just numbers I'm gonna punch in later, it's fine. The only thing I've gotten here that I'm worried about is this thing. Everything else is a number.
Okay, but what, what if I s- put in the other way?
You solve that one, substitute here. The reason I would find that challenging is I think you have to do a quadratic on this one to solve it.
I did a square root.
How'd you do a square root with no? If you square rooted this to get time by itself, you're gonna end up with a square root of t here. Here. I, I don't know how to solve this other than the quadratic, which I like to avoid if I can.
What? I'll just restart.
Well, I wanna make sure that you understand why what you're doing won't work or what you did wrong, or am I missing something? Where'd you, so, did you rearrange this to be a x squared plus b x plus c format? So I'm in trouble wrapping my brain from here to here because you didn't put this in the x squared plus b x plus c format, let me see if I can do it. That's gonna be your A.
Oh, I had it, wait, oh my gosh, it's a quadruped.
Oh, you, you, you tried to take square root, yeah, so you.
I'm just putting t by itself.
No, you're not though, you got t here and there. Do you, you see that?
Okay, I'm gonna do that.
So you had t squared equals some stuff, but unfortunately t was still messed up. So take this square root and help you. The only way to solve this kind of an equation and isolate t is to use the quadratic.
I don't like algebra.
It's gonna be a rough year. The al-, so, one thing that will not change is the algebra, we're gonna be doing algebra from here until you guys are done. It's never here, go memorize these physics facts.
No, I don't like memorizing things either, so that's good.
Okay. Did everybody see, you're not gonna solve this without using the quadratic? But if I solve this one and plug it in, hopefully some things goes away, some things go away, and then I'm left with a square root of some kind, maybe. Okay? Now, the only thing I'm worried about, I know, I know all these numbers, the only thing I hear that's not a number is that thing. So effectively, I just need to solve for the number. So if you plug numbers, you can eventually figure this thing out, but I hate that, so. V naught is going to equal, and take as many steps as you need, but I'm gonna flop, so this is effectively g in the numerator, two in the denominator, correct? Yes? I want that in my numerator, so I'm gonna cross multiply those things, which is going to put my g x squared up there and a two times the quantity h plus x tan theta down here, correct? That mess anything up? I'm, I'm, I missed a cosine somewhere, where is it? Um, v naught squared, it's down here, correct? Yes. Cosine squared theta. Except then I'm going to take a square root. All that. T, v naught, and that's your answer. Dimensionally, is that correct? That by itself is gonna factor out to meters per second, right? No, this is meters, sorry. Meters per second squared. Meters squared, it could be meters cubed per second squared, those are lengths. But you're gonna get rid of one of these meters, so I'm left with meter squared per second squared, take square root, left with meters per second, it is a velocity, I'm good. I'm not, not, I'm not adding any unlike units, I'm not subtracting any unlike units, and my final units end up with the units that I should have, which is length per time. First of all, you see that these are all numbers now? Plug them in. Do you have any issues with the algebra, how I got there? A lot of times these problems, and this will only get even more so as you go on, things will start to look scary in the middle of the problem. If you're confident with your setup, keep pushing the algebra, especially in dynamics, things will just start to disappear and simplify.
Wait.
Why wouldn't it be flipped the other way?
This came up. This, this is effectively all this stuff over one, right?
Right.
So I'm cross multiplying. So, that went up, the v naught did, and I brought it up and I flopped them when I'm done.
Oh.
But that went up. That went up, this came down to the two times that stuff, times the cosine squared, that stayed in the top, and then I had to take the square root because it was the v naught squared. Again, if you need to do that in eight steps, please do. As you do all eight steps over and over again, you'll eventually get more comfortable with doing that. The way I double check the fact I didn't screw anything up while I was doing all that is doing the dimensional analysis. If I screwed something up in the algebra, it'll most likely show up in the dimensional analysis.
So, I'm, v naught, so. Uh, v naught sine, or sine, sine divided by cosine, is that tangent?
That is tangent. Now, your AP exam equation sheet has trig functions on it, it does not have trig identities. Notice, if you still had sine over cosine here, you could still solve this problem. As a matter of fact, they would cancel one of the cosines, instead of a tangent, cosine squared, you'd have a sine, cosine. Which would be a double angle form that you could substitute to sine and two, but again, it doesn't matter because you can use those other versions and still plug in the numbers and still get the right answer. The, the trig identity can help you simplify some, it is not necessary to solve this problem. I don't believe there's ever been an actual, there might be some in your book that require trig identities, but you have more resources available to you when you're doing homework. I don't think there's any problems on the AP exam that will require you to know a trig identity. If you know some, it will help you. Sine over cosine is tangent, sine squared plus the cosine squared is equal to one, that comes in handy a lot. Does everyone understand the setup of this problem? Does everyone understand the approach of solving the simpler equation and substituting out the thing I don't want? Namely, time. I had an equation here that had two, that had two unknowns, I had an equation here that had the same two unknowns. Two equations, two unknowns, substitution fixes that. I solve one to plug into the other, I don't like solving quadratics if I can avoid them, so I solved this one first and substituted over there. Now, if you wanna do the quadratic and substitute over here, it'll work, it's a little trickier cuz you gotta pay attention to your, you're gonna end up with that whole plus or minus thing, right? You gotta pay attention to which one makes sense, which one was right. It requires a solid grasp of what the math is telling you about the problem. Is everybody good on this one? That black is gonna be hard to erase when you're getting started.
Yeah, I'm.
Now, I will, I see some of you working your brains. Do not memorize this problem, cuz the odds of you seeing this problem are pretty slim. Possible? Sure. Likely? No.
Especially if I thought we ran over you.
Especially if I thought we ran over you.
I was trying to like.
But if you understand the concepts, the techniques, the approaches, the applications of the equations, you can tackle anything I throw at you. This is as hard a problem as you're gonna see on the exam tomorrow. This is as hard as you're gonna get, I think. Okay? If you understand these concepts and apply them to this problem or simpler ones, you should be good, yeah.
So I was trying to catch up, but I was a little behind cuz I did it a different way. So, um, how did you get to the square root part from, I gotta just say?
Here?
Yeah.
Because when I rearrange all this, I get v naught squared equals all this stuff with that squared. And then I just take square root of both sides.
Oh, oh, so this, okay, I got it.
From here.
I think I got it.
You good?
Yeah.
And again, please, write out all the steps that you need to.
I need to.
Multiply v naught squared across first, if you want to, then divide everything by all the other stuff. So you get everything on one side. Then take square root. At least it's only three, it's not too bad.
Um, so. But you multiply two v naught squared cosine squared, you know, the, the numerator, I mean, to not.
That one here.
Um, you multiply all of that by h plus.
Hang with me. Can I, can I erase the picture of the problem?
Yes.
Sorry, sorry, I didn't.
That black looks good, but it's hard to erase. While I'm doing this, what is the acceleration of an object in free fall? G that way, whatever, whatever, you know, can be positive or negative, you can call your reference frame, right? Does acceleration in my vertical direction affect anything in my horizontal? No. I have a sum over here, so I have to be somewhat careful. When I just have products and quotients, it's way easier. When I, when I have when I have a sum or a difference, I have to be a little careful about how I cross multiply and stuff, right? Do you see that this value over here is the same as that? Right? If I had that, if I multiply both sides of this equation by d, that's the same thing as bringing the d over here. If I multiply both sides of the equation by b, it's the same thing as bringing b over there. I call it cross multiplying, doesn't matter really, it's, whatever. You bring it over from the other side, you bring it up. That's what I'm doing. All I care about is this, I could bring that whole thing up, but then I'm gonna end up dividing by this stuff. All I want is that piece. And since it's a product, I can get away with it. I'll have a little more trouble with this piece because it's a, a sum. But for that thing, I can multiply both sides of that equation by v naught squared. In my mind, I'm just bringing it up here, but multiply both sides of the v naught squared. It's still effectively divided by one. Right? And now I'm gonna divide both sides of the equation by that quantity. I have to do the whole quantity cuz it's a sum, right? I can't divide by a piece of it, I gotta divide by the whole thing. So I divide by that quantity. When I divide both sides by that quantity, it effectively puts it there, right, and just simply bringing it down that way. It might be, been wrong before. You buy that? Then I take the square root. Is the number reasonable? It is very.
I did it, I did the problem two different ways and I got the same answer, but the part where the saying's wrong, you know.
Let me show you the right unit and chapter and number and all kinds of, part B. It's part B.
But how come your cosine, your cosine is squared?
It's always been squared. Remember, remember that t squared I had out there, one half, or minus one half g t squared? I squared t, t was a cosine from my x equation. That's where cosine gets squared.
Yeah, where's your x squared, or? Yeah, time equals that stuff, right? The cosine piece came out of your x, your horizontal displacement, and we substituted that in for t squared, the cosine got squared.
The cosine squared for the same reason v naught was squared.
I expelling my v naught squared down again, which is not what I'm thinking of.
Everybody good with that problem?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Other problems you wanna go over, or misconceptions or questions you wanna go over? So, I, I end up having to beat this drum every year until it finally sinks into stubborn skulls. You cannot memorize your way through this. Cannot. If you have an identic memory and you go look at every physics problem ever invented by man, then maybe. I don't have an identic memory. If you do, and you wanna go look at every physics problem, I don't even look, you don't have time to look at every physics problem in my life. Right? You've got to under, there's only three equations, three more with the trig equations, right? If you understand them and know how to apply them and can do some algebra, you can handle anything I'm gonna throw at you. I try to give you enough sampling of problems to get enough practice to get good at that. If you have done that and taken advantage of those opportunities and taken advantage of the rework to learn what mistakes you have made, then you ought to be well positioned to do well. If you're trying to memorize your way through. Sorry. It's hard to watch, yes. Question or discussion? Other problems, other questions? Misconceptions or problems, yes?
I think Mr. Guy.
You have a question back here?
There's gonna be like multiple choice questions.
Yes. Roughly half the exam, multiple choice.
I didn't do that.
That doesn't mean, that doesn't mean you will have the same number of questions in multiple choice, you will have a greater number of questions that are multiple choice, but the point values are such that it'll work out roughly fifty fifty. You'll have a fewer number of My brain's blocking. There's a misconception question, multiple choice up front, um, free response, sorry. There is a lower number of free response questions in the back, but they're longer, take longer, and have more point values assigned to them, so they'll roughly equal fifty fifty.
And there, there'll be vector addition and.
That is fair game, a vector addition problem is fair game, as is relative velocity. Cuz those are vec-, those tend to be vector problems.
On the just more?
Yes. No, I cannot. I have way too much personal integrity to do that to you, yes.
To be clear.
Are you still working this problem?
Sorta.
He's like a dog with a bone, he's like it's a number.
This is equal to this, right? You can calculate it that way. Yes.
Okay, cool.
I, I wanna make sure my number's right, cuz the back of the books are wrong, but I did it two different ways and got the same.
Well, I don't know you didn't make a mistake, you may have made the same mistake twice, and I don't know if the back of the book is correct.
Well, I know it's not that.
Okay.
I plagiarized this problem out of the book, but I changed the number five years ago, so yeah.
Are we gonna have a problem?
I'm trying to wait, I'm waiting for Nathan to calculate.
You will have a, you will have one problem that is of similar difficulty, that you probably won't have to do.
Leave.
Go away.
He likes to get grades too.
Who makes us feel bad?
What?
It's gonna better do what we do.
Cuz you're envious.
I am.
I have no doubt that some of you are regretting possibly having selected AP. I am, I am at least reasonably confident that you'll be over it by the end of the year. This is, this is the.
One ever finished, I will regret it.
I think you'll be happy once you, once you're done. You'll be happy, your problem solving skills and algebra skills will be off the chart, and your standardized testing skills will be off the chart compared with the word.
The problem is I won't need that anymore.
Other specific questions? And you already had one, so. We have another specific question while we're waiting.
Yeah, what's?
Number ten, it's super easy, super fast.
Wait, question ten?
H was what, one point five?
Ooh, get out of here, kid.
Do you get it?
Yeah, apparently, but I don't believe him still.
But you wanna understand where you went wrong? If you'll stick around after everyone else is done.
I can't, I have to leave right now.
Oh.
I mean, I'll send you my work code.
Tell you what. Take a picture. Ian, Ian, take a picture and text it to me, I'll look at it later and tell you where you went wrong.
You got a bad calculator.
Your calculator.
So far, one, zero.
He did the exact same thing I did though. So it's a problem.
Might be a calculator operator.
Reset your calculator.
It might be a order of operations problem, it might be a calculator operation problem, are you in degrees?
Wait, no, I'm in rea-, oh my god!
Rookie mistake.
Oh my god!
Rookie mistake.
Rookie.
I don't, you were using.
Numbers boy.
I was in calcu-, I, I was in calculus.
Numbers boy, you's. There are things for which radians are required, and you will do those things in this class this year. I know we didn't do them last year, but we didn't do circular motion last year. When we do circular motion, radians will be necessary.
Oh my god! At least I know I was right the whole time. It wasn't me, I didn't do it.
Gravity did.
It's okay.
It's gravity's fault. Alright. Do we have another specific question in the upper?
Set ten.
Huh? Problem ten. Misconception ten.
I just wanna make sure I got that stuff.
Can I like fix that now instead of doing tests?
You would've only got like a couple of, you would've just put like.
Alright, why are we, why are we crashing cats and, uh, shooting? Alright, why are we, why are we crashing cats and shooting monkeys? Alright, if we can keep the noise down, I would appreciate it, I'm not sure how the audio is carrying on the video, so. Alright. A hunter is aiming horizontally at a monkey who is sitting in a tree. The monkey is so terrified when it sees the gun, okay, that was blown air, but it doesn't specify, okay. A gun that falls off the tree. At the very instant, the hunter pulls the trigger, what will happen? Yes, the monkey lets go as soon as he shoots. Yep. And, and this is, this is, this is the hand that she's making, that Veronica's doing. The monkey, the monkey falls, the bullet also falls, what is the acceleration due to gravity on the monkey? What does the acceleration do to gravity on the bullet? They're the same. What is the initial vertical velocity of the bullet? Vertical velocity. Zero. What is the initial vertical velocity of the monkey? Zero. Yet, you, you have to set those starting conditions in your mind, right? Because it may not be the fact that the vertical velocity is starting at zero. If he shoots at an angle, it's a different answer, right? Because there's another problem I've seen where the, the thing's up here and they're shooting at an angle. This starts at zero, but accelerates, this has the same acceleration, but it doesn't start at zero, it's actually shooting up. So that will do this. Right? But if you're aiming right at it, if it's horizontal, it does say horizontal, right? Yes. If you aim horizontally at something, and it drops at the instant you shoot, they're gonna do this. They're gonna, their vertical displacement is going to go down at the same rate. You'll still hit the monkey. Dead monkey, it's a very violent physics book. What else you guys got? Problem forty one. Two planes approach each other head on, each has a speed of that, they spot each other when they initially that far apart, how much time do the pilots have to take evasive action? That's a valid relative speed problem. Did you wanna do that problem or you just asked me if it was, if it was relevant valid? It is relevant to the test. Yes. Two planes approach each other at seven hundred eighty kilometers an hour. It looks purple. Plane A. Can everybody see that sort of ground? There's a glare on the screen right there too. Plane A is going that way at seven eighty kilometers an hour. Plane B. Is equal magnitude opposite direction. At least that's why I read the question. Two planes approach each other head on, each has a speed of seven eighty kilometers an hour. This is all relative to the ground. And they spot each other when they are initially ten kilometers apart. How much time do they have to take evasive action? I assume evasive action of any kind will prevent collision. They don't give a response time, they, they apparently spot each other from ten kilometers away, so we're assuming that as long as they take action at the last possible instant. They don't provide me any other information about delay times or reaction times or how far apart they have to be when they can maneuver and still be safe, they give me that information, right? So I have to make the assumption that any evasion up until the moment of collision will prevent calamity. Okay? So, this is a relatively straightforward relative speed problem. How do I do it? Good. So, in the old days of kinematics, we could use the displacement equation for each of these, right? And set the displacement equal and find out how much time that took and that sort of thing, right? Could do that. And the fact that they're both seven hundred eighty would make that easier than it could be. If I didn't give you seven hundred eighty kilometers an hour in each of them, if they were different, that would make that approach harder. There's an easy way to do it with relative speed. If I'm going seven eighty that way and the other guy's going seven eighty that way, what does this guy look like he's doing relative to this guy? Fifteen sixty. If I'm traveling that way, if I'm traveling this way at seven hundred eighty kilometers an hour, the entire rest of the world looks like seven hundred eighty kilometers that way plus what else they're doing. This guy is already going seven hundred eighty kilometers that way from my perspective, because I'm flying at him that fast. In addition to that, oh by the way, he's also contributing seven hundred kilometers an hour. If you wanna think vector addition, it's. That guy sees the entire world doing that. So it's that plus that is what, is what this guy sees. And I can put your, you can put yourself in perspective, either one of these guys. Because when they collide, they both see the same thing. So the relative velocity is fifteen sixty kilometers per hour. And the thing is, this approach will work even if their speeds are different. They didn't both have to be seven hundred eighty to take this approach, it'll still work this simply. Right? Then it's just a. Let me do the actual thing there. Distance equals speed times time, right? And the thing I'm looking for is time, so it's. Distance over velocity, which is going to be my ten kilometers divided by my fifteen sixty kilometers per hour. And please don't give me the answer in point zero 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 three hours. Anybody have a watch that measures point zero 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 three hours? No. I know this is gonna give me a ridiculously small number, correct? It's ten divided by fifteen sixty, that's a small number. But it's gonna be in units of what? It's a time, it better not be kilometers an hour. It's a time, it's hours, the kilometers cancel. Okay, everybody pay attention, this is dimensional analysis stuff that will save your butt. Kilometers divided by kilometers cancels. I've got hours in the denominator of the denominator. Multiply the top and bottom by hours, you get hours in the top, right? It's hours, your answer is in hours. It's gonna give you a small number, so just do yourself a favor. Thirty six hundred seconds divided by an hour? Twenty three point one is a reasonable number for seconds. If you ended up with, you know, five hundred and six seconds, it might make you very close to minutes, but yeah. I'm just saying, nobody measures time in point zero 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 hour units. Does everybody see why it's as simple than setting up a displacement equation and solving? Yep. Using relative speed, yes. If you wanted to solve the kinematics purely, you would have to set up a displacement equation for plane A, you have to set up an equation displacement for plane B, and then set them equal to each other and solve for time. Which will work just fine, it's just more painful and harder. Takes more time. Make your life easy. I don't know how late I'll be up tonight, but if you have questions, you can shoot me texts, I'll wait, I'll try to find them. Other questions? Sure. I need a number, who's picking? Fifty one, or fifty and fifty one are both level three problems. Fifty does not have a picture.
But if you have level three problems, you're gonna get the experience you need to do those lesser problems, but you also get the experience.
Did we sell out number fifty? Do you need that filled out right this second?
Uh, yes sir.
Why?
It's okay, they can do it at the same time.
It'll take twenty seconds.
It shouldn't even take twenty seconds.
Because spending my time is one of my favorite things.
An airplane, I'll read it and make you listen.
Because I have so much extra time laying around.
I'm gonna read the question. An airplane whose airspeed is five hundred and eighty kilo meters.
What's the difference between a kilometer and a kilometer? There is, there actually is. What's the difference between a micrometer and a micrometer?
One is a unit of something.
One is a unit of measure, the other is? A device that measures it, yes. A micrometer is a length. A micrometer is something that measures things in micrometers.
Okay, five hundred and eight, okay, an airplane whose airspeed is five hundred and eighty kilometers an hour is supposed to fly in a straight path. Thirty eight degrees north of east. But a steady eighty two kilometers an hour wind is blowing from the north. In which direction should the plane head?
It's very similar. It's actually most similar to that other problem you guys had where the airplane was flying due south and a north, a northeast blowing wind. This is very similar. I think so. So, do you want help drawing the picture?
Alright, I'm gonna travel fast.
An airplane is supposed to fly thirty eight degrees north of east. North of east. Thirty eight degrees. But a steady eighty two kilometers per hour wind is blowing from the north. Okay, here's the difference between this problem and the other problem you guys did. The other problem said the plane was doing this and the wind was doing this. That is not what this problem is saying. This problem is saying the plane wants to do this and the wind is doing that. So before, you had a plane vector and a wind vector, and you had to figure out the resultant was, which was that. This was telling you, I want my result to be that direction. Question?
Why is the vector of the winds not like?
I haven't added them yet, I'm just showing the orientation of them. I'm, I'm not adding my vectors yet. Good question. Good question, I've not done any vector addition yet because, again, I don't have a plane vector and a wind vector adding together to a result. I have a wind vector and a desired resultant, but I'm trying to figure out what the plane vector needs to do to make that happen. Right? So I gotta be careful how I draw this. So I've just drawn the vectors in a raw form here from some common origin. I'll figure out my orientation here in a second. Good question, do you understand why? In what direction should the plane head? So do you understand, they're asking me for the vector that I'm going to do as my plane, that the wind will add to to end up with that? Do you see that? I'm sorry? Sort of. I gotta, I gotta, I gotta draw the picture first, I'll, I'll be able to talk much more. But there, there's one other, give me one second, there's one thing I wanted to point out here. This is the direction I want to go. The magnitude they gave me is the speed I am going. So this is weird, right? They've given me the direction of the resultant, but the magnitude of the input. Do you see the difference? The wind speed they gave me was five hundred eighty. I have a wind speed of five hundred eighty kilometers an hour that I can fly. I need to pick a direction to go to with this vector that when added to this vector will result in a direction of that. And the magnitude will be something else that I don't know yet, I can calculate it later. I'm probably not gonna care about it, I'm just trying to achieve this direction. Does everybody see that? So, generally speaking, if I wanna do this, but the wind is pushing me there, how am I gonna have to fly? That way. Right? So I want to find the vector, first of all, so I'm gonna have a plane vector to which I'm going to add that vector to end up there. This is how I reason my way through this. So my wind vector is there. My plane vector has to be there. My plane vector has to be that way, so that when the wind pushes me that way, I end up going that way. The magnitude of this one is five eighty. The magnitude of the wind was eighty two. The direction of my resultant is thirty eight. The direction of my wind was straight south. So this is gonna be a subtraction problem. Because I still need to do x and y components on my vector addition in order to make it work, right? Because the hypotenuse of a triangle is never the sum of the legs. That's where we started all this stuff way back when. I'm gonna redraw this, you're supposed to look here, I'm getting that confused with wind.
Wait, br, we don't know that.
We don't know the magnitude, we know the direction. There's a hint in this problem that we're gonna take advantage of, says use the law of sines. I would argue. You're trying to find the. Direction that the plane wants to fly, you wanna try, we're trying to find that direction there. Because I am going that speed, period. I know the length of this vector, I know the length of that vector, I don't know the length of this vector. I know the direction of that vector, I know the direction of that vector, I don't know the direction of that, that vector.
Where did we start, which one did we start with? Oh wait, I already know it, I got it, sorry.
What does the law of sines say? What does the law of sines say? Can they give you an appendix number to help you out? I think I remember what it says. I think it says the sine of the angle is to the opposite side as the sine of any other angle, the same triangle, is to their opposite side? I'll look it up then. If you have any triangle, it doesn't have to be a right triangle, the sine of this angle is to that side is the sine of that angle is to that side is the sine of that angle is to that side. I think that's what it says. That's the sort of thing I would give you in this problem like this if you needed it. I remember the law of cosines. I think I have the law of sines. Yes, sine alpha is the, A is. Yes, sine alpha is to A, is sine beta is to B, is sine gamma is to C. I would argue you could also use the law of cosines on this one, but they suggest the law of signs, let's go with that one. What does the law of signs do for us here? And think, think about this triangle. Do I know any angles in this triangle?
We know the thirty eight degree one.
Yep.
We, yeah, we need to find a side, side like that.
If that's thirty eight, what's that?
Yeah, that's a side we need to find.
So because you have that, we can find that.
Yeah, because we can do up, up, we can, wait, okay.
If that's thirty eight. That's forty two, fifty two, fifty two. Hundred eighty degrees, right? These, these are complementary? Cause this comes down here and makes the right angle, that's complementary with that, so that's gotta be fifty two. If that's fifty two, what's that? One twenty eight. You all had geometry, right?
I forgot what we're trying to find, oh yeah, uh, so then what if we find the, we don't need to find the height?
I'm trying to figure out where we can apply the law of signs. Oh, we got, we got, so, so yeah, so that's one twenty eight, I've got that length. I've got that length, I can get that angle. I can get, I can get that angle.
Oh yeah, because we have.
I figured out what that angle was, and I already know that side, so the sine of one twenty eight is to five eighty. As the sine of alpha is to eighty two. By that? To solve for alpha. Do you under- do you understand how I got fifty two here? Do you understand I got one twenty eight there? Now I'm just recognizing the fact that I have one angle with its side here, which gives me the ratio that will apply to any angle with its side in this triangle. Recognizing I have this side.
Is that the thing that you were talking about?
Yeah, the law of signs, yes. And that's something if I give this to you in an exam, I'd give you that law. So if I take one twenty eight, sine, how's the number, good, divided by five eighty equals times eighty two. Inverse sine, six point three nine six, so six point four degrees. Does such a small angle make sense? I'm flying at five eighty, this is pushing me to eighty two, my flight is definitely driving the problem here, but it's gonna have some effect. So I wanna skew a little bit to the right, so this little angle here is six point four. Add it to that thirty eight. Gives me forty four point four.
So something's happening and I don't know why I'm not getting that number.
Why you're not getting the six point four? One twenty eight sine, what do you get?
Um, zero point seven.
Yep, divide by five eighty.
Um, zero point zero zero one three.
See, right, times eighty two.
Times eighty two, um, zero point one 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 four.
Inverse sine. Cause the sine of the angle equals all that stuff you just did.
Oh, so then I do inverse sine.
Inverse sine, yep.
Of.
You've gotten the ratio, now you need the angle to go to that ratio.
Wait, did you just do that in your head?
No. I, I will teach you how to do trig functions in your head if you want.
No, that's okay.
If you had to spend eight hours a day doing trig functions in your head in the lives of you and a hundred fifty other people dependent on you doing it right, do you think you'd get at it? Take comfort in that. Thirty eight plus six point four. That gamma angle that I have up there that I'm having a hard time with the pen on is forty four point four. North of east, thank you. Is that how they ask the question? In what direction should the plane head? Forty four point four degrees north of east.
I also don't know what should say this.
I was trying to match the color with the picture. It's not cooperating. Let's see how this one's doing. That green angle there is what I'm calling gamma, that gamma angle.
Use the law of signs, okay, now I know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Now you could do this problem without the law of signs, but the law of signs makes it a lot easier. Cause without the law of signs, you would have to take that vector's all vertical, you would have to write a trig function for each of these, but since you only know the magnitude of one, only know the angle of the other, you're gonna get some weird combination of equations you're gonna have to solve for that can be painful.
I kinda like that one.
You gotta know the trick to it, and that makes it easier, but once you know the trick, it's not too bad. But they give you a hint, so it helps. Do we have other questions? If you have a relative speed problem, you will not have more than one. You absolutely will have a ballistics problem and likely more than one. It will likely be a variety of level ground versus horizontal launches off of buildings versus non-hor horizontal launches from a height. For what?
What did you say, there's a B multiple?
Ballistics problems.
They would not give us a problem like this if, without like saying the law of signs.
I would give you the law of signs with this. If you need any trig identities, I would give you those. Or a morning.
Wait, swim still.
Swim still thing, I still need volunteer for the meat next week. You're gonna be there? You signed with Felbert? Awesome class.
Wasn't there supposed to be one like today?
That meat has moved several times. I believe it's in its final place, if it doesn't happen next week, I think we're running out of time to have water and the kids are wanting to get in. Tea and chili. The absolute best way to study for any of these exams is to diligently review your homework. Understand what you got wrong, understand what you got right and why it was right, understand what you got wrong and why it was wrong, understand why the right way to do that problem is the right way to do that problem. Know the equations and how to apply them. And then do algebra. C and D. C and D are tomorrow. The keys are posted. I understand this is painful or has been so far for some of you up to this point. If you continue to struggle, it does get better. Dynamics to me is the last really big hurdle. There's a couple quirky things with circular motion that I have to wrap and rain the brown, but by then you'll have the mechanics down so well, it should not be an issue. Apply the equations, recognize where your unknowns are, recognize how many equations you need to have to solve for that many unknowns. Do your substitutions, plug in your numbers.
Can I go be another one who's like graph things?
Almost certainly. There will be a graph problem of some sort, will be an area under the curve problem, maybe. The AP exam is a big fan of visual representations of data and your interpretation of them. So you'll almost certainly see one or more, at least in the misconceptual section, problems where you are presented with a graph and asked to interpret it. Or given some information and then giving a series of graphs from which to choose that will represent what they've just said. Understanding that velocity is the rate of change of displacement and acceleration is the rate of change of velocity is important. When are things zero, when do they cross axes, what are areas under?
And the area under the curve of velocity, right, is the, is this plane?
Yes, it, over the same time interval. Example, a ball thrown in the air. I throw a ball up, it goes up, reaches the peak, comes down. At the peak, my vertical velocity is zero, this is all vertical. My vertical velocity is zero. My acceleration this whole time is negative G, right? This is the slope of that. This is the slope of that. My velocity has a negative constant slope, my acceleration is negative and constant. Slope's going this way, areas under curves going that way. If I pick a time interval from here to here. This height of negative G times this time interval gives me the area of this rectangle. The base here is a time interval. The height here is a acceleration unit, meters per second squared, for example. Meters per second squared times the number of seconds gives me meters per second, it has a dimension or unit of velocity. And if I actually calculate that area, it will spit out a number that is a velocity, meters per second. And over that time interval, since this is below the origin, below the axis, it's a negative value. It will tell me that my velocity has gone down by that much over that timeframe. So if this spit out, just for example, that's negative nine point eight, right? Let's say if I measured that for three seconds. A point from time two to time five, an interval of three seconds, that has a width of three seconds and a height of roughly ten meters per second squared. Three seconds times ten meters per second squared equals thirty meters per second. That tells me that whatever value this is is thirty meters per second higher than that value. So maybe this is twenty and that's negative ten. Area of this thing will tell me the height of that thing over that same interval. Similarly, that was three seconds, call this one and two seconds. I calculated the area under that curve. Which is a little trickier, it's like a little rectangular, a little triangle, a little triangle piece there, I'd have to calculate. But this area which is above the axis, it will tell me how much my displacement has changed over that one second. If I calculate that area, I'd have to know that value and that value, right? Calculate that total area, I have an area of a rectangle and an area of a triangle, add those two together, that'll give me the total area, or the total, yeah, the total area of that thing. That area is going to be a time times a length per time or a length. Velocity is meters per second, times seconds, that's gonna give me some number in meters. Which will tell me how much my displacement changed over that same time interval. Even though this is curved and weird and I'm not sure what to do with that, it will tell me that this value here is higher than that value here by that amount. I would not inflict this on you until you've had calculus, except that it's on the AP exam, so. This makes way more sense once you've had calculus. It's, it's eligible to be on the test, it is an AP question, I've seen several of them. It is likely to be one question on the entire AP exam. But it's possible. So I'm neglecting you if I neglect this.
You're still recording, right?
I'm sorry, yes. I'm only gonna do that file, it's kinda huge, I wasn't streaming, like I normally do it automatically uploads, I have to find someplace to stash it. I'm sure that file is not gonna transfer over text message.
Google Classroom.
Yep, when I, when I do Google Classroom on my laptop, it has a record function that I can start and then uploads it to Google somewhere and I can send a link. Which is what I did with a couple guys that were out last week, um, I can make it work on my iPad for some reason. If you needed to focus on something, I would focus on the ballistics problems and the misconceptual concepts. If you have a relative speed problem, it will be only one, if you have an area under the curve problem, it will be only one. Even on the AP exam, you're likely to have only one of each of those. Cause there's a lot of ground to cover in AP two.
Yes, just go like this and you'll know everything.
Sleep by your book, learn by osmosis.
Yeah, he was dead serious when he said that.
Who said that?
I wasn't here, so I have no idea.
It was two, two years ago last year.
Was this the damage speaker we had for like two weeks?
We, literally all the girls were crying. Not because it was hard, because we were creepy. And he was actually like.
I mean, I, I pressure guys hard, but I try to help you, I try to.
No, you're nice.
I try to point you in the right direction.
No, he was just like. Y'all don't understand what I'm teaching, I'm not teaching you, so I'm mumbling the whole time.
He would just stand and yell at us and then like say something.
Get it, mitosis, don't step on mitosis.
It was weird because he like yelled at us, but then he joked with us.